Thank you, and good evening to those of you who just entered the room. And for those who might view this at a later time, by cable, this is the beginning of our open session for the Board of Selectments meeting tonight, March 24, 2015. The Board convened an executive session at 6:00 PM tonight on two matters, one involving a contractual negotiation and another involving collective bargaining matters. So we are now at the point of entering into our open or regular business meeting. We always start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite everyone here, please join us for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. And right out of the gate, we're privileged this evening to have a guest with us for a little while here. We're going to have a conversation with our new state senator, Barbara Lattalian. You're welcome to sit right there if you like.
Thank you very much.
There's a microphone in the middle of that table.
Great.
So welcome and thank you for joining us.
It's a pleasure to be here.
As you know, Senator, we've had a couple conversations over the last few months, and we appreciate your willingness to meet with us. We've embarked on a series of discussions with our state delegation, and we're fortunate here in Tewksbury to be represented by two capable representatives and you as well. In order to be as effective and efficient as we could be, we thought it would be beneficial to both you and the Board if we had those discussions independent of one another so that we could give you the floor for some time and we could ask those questions that we had more directly to each of you. So I think from our vantage point, that process so far has unfolded in a very positive manner. You are the third of those three state legislators to meet with us. And as you know, we have five or six items that we have scripted out, if you will, from an agenda perspective that we look forward to talking with you tonight about. So first off, welcome, and I would like to give you an opportunity, if you like, just to offer any general comments, and then we can kind of jump into those questions or topics that we have previously provided to you.
Sure. Well, in the interest of time, I will limit what I'm going to say as opening remarks, only to say that for those watching on TV and for those in the audience that don't know, even though I'm new to Tewksbury and new as a state senator, certainly not new to the process of vote legislation and budgetary, having served for eight years as a state representative and having served as the vice chair of Ways and Means. So I will say, in general, things seem to be going at a fairly slow pace this year. Some of that is the fact that we have a new governor. Some of that is the fact that our new governor was met with historic levels of snow that we've all needed to contend with. Committee assignments have happened. I happen to chair the municipalities committee, so that would be, I think, beneficial to all of you because that means that any local initiatives that come up to the State House will be heard before my committee, and I will be in a position to do my utmost to expedite those. So on a number of other committees as well, maybe of interest to folks, education, higher education, innovative and alternative education, looking at sort of places statewide where people are raising the bar, and maybe we could adapt some of those ideas to other communities. Healthcare finance, which is really the place where any new healthcare spending, anything that has a fiscal note would need to go through healthcare finance. Elder affairs, which will certainly be of interest, I think, to our senior population here in Tewksbury. I'm on a total of nine committees. So it's going to be a lot of work. And as I said, those committees have been sort of slow in getting started. The bills have not been sent over to committees. But once that happens, we will be, you know, set to work with both committee hearings. And concurrently, we're obviously dealing with budget requests right now. So we know the governor's budget is out. We've all seen his numbers. I have the cherry sheet for Tewksbury, which we can get into. The House will release their budget most likely around April 15. There will then be three days for House members to file amendments. Then there's school vacation week, where they sit through the thousands of amendments. I was on that end of looking at amendments not so long ago. And then the last week in April, they will take up their budget. We will most likely look at, do that same process starting in mid-May and finishing, considering our version of the budget, that last week in May that leads into the more update weekend. So that all is sort of happening on its regular schedule. But the committee hearings and those kinds of things are happening at a much slower pace. So happy to just go right ahead and if you want to start asking questions.
Yeah, so I mean, you're going to find, you know, one of the consistencies here and things that we've asked you to address with us tonight, a lot of it obviously comes down to dollars and resources. So I know that at this point, it's very difficult to, you know, guarantee outcomes and monetary assistance. But I think you know from your prior visit to introduce yourself to us a couple months back, and also some of our more recent discussions, that what we've listed here really are, in our minds collectively, the highest priorities to Tewksbury. And as stewards of the community here locally, these are the key focal points. And the first one, right out of the gate, no surprise, I'm sure to you, is really regarding the Route 38 situation and the improvements that we need, not only relative to infrastructure and hot top and curving, lighting, but also really what we believe is, all of that goes to improving economics or economic development in the long term by attracting businesses and retaining businesses here in Tewksbury. So this is our major thoroughfare. I know my colleague to my left, Mr. Gay, will remind us that it's been at least 30 years since --
Over 30 years.
Yeah, over 30 years since Route 38 has been spruced up, if you will, from an infrastructure standpoint. So that's our biggest priority. And as you, I certainly appreciate, are aware, your predecessor and our two state reps were instrumental at the end of the last session to get some monies, a significant sum of money, in the transportation bond bill. Obviously, that's a pot ride from having it appropriated, but it's one step in the right direction. So whatever comments you can offer to us, any questions or input you have in that general context, we're certainly all ears.
Sure. Yes, so for those who don't know, $10 million was placed into last year in the Transportation Bond Bill, which is Chapter 79 of the Acts of 2014. As you mentioned, and most people don't realize, just because something's in a bond bill doesn't mean you're getting an appropriation and you start work. It's a two-step process, so it's in the bond bill, but it now needs to be authorized by A&amp;F. And so what we have done is started that process of reaching the A&amp;F secretary, Kristin Lapore, to sit down with her to press the need for authorizing this information. I think it would be important that, if possible, if we could work together to come up with sort of a, break this down into meaningful increments.
Sure.
Okay?
Yep.
Because it may very well be that monies that haven't been appropriated, that are left that are in smaller amounts than the $10 million, might be able to begin you on your path. So I think it would be important that the town really do a process of really breaking down a menu of different things that you'd like us to go towards with varying price points. And that way, we may be able to begin to plug away and take pieces of the $10 million as a starting point. And I, I'm a big incrementalist. I really believe that if we can get this started and begin to make some progress, then we get momentum on our side and, you know, begin to take on more pieces of it. But I think that that would be extraordinarily helpful for me, would be if there could be a process of prioritizing, breaking this down into meaningful chunks. You know, what's your highest priority? What are the different price points associated with it? I think that would be really helpful. So I think that that needs to be step one, is coming up with sort of that menu of price points that comprise this $10 million. We, you know, can set up a meeting with Kristin Lapore about authorizing, but we also need to sit down and do our work with the Department of Transportation as well, and sit down with them as a delegation and have that conversation with them. My success as a House member largely stemmed from just, you know, getting to all the people that are in a position to make decisions and making sure they were crystal clear on what my needs were. So as long as you sort of do a good job of advocating and making your case, then if additional monies are available, you know, this is something that could easily be, you know, authorized in part. So I would suggest that we do that.
And we've heard similar comments or feedback from your fellow legislators as we've talked to them. So that's not a surprise to us in terms of phasing in some of these steps, and that is consistent, and we've asked the town manager and his management team to kind of revisit that a little bit. As you might be aware, there's a first phase, if you will, for lack of a better term, that's coming from the Lowell Line up to Pike Street. We have a new development going in, new commercial business going in just next door to this property. And certainly, it would make sense that we could potentially extend beyond that location because it's a new business, it's going to employ a number of people. So hopefully, that, in the context of what you're suggesting, can become, you know, the seed, if you will, for further phases as we go. But, Mr. Gay, I did you want to make?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson. At the last meeting, I was at the Northern Maine State Council Government on the Select Representatives. I asked them, at the last MPO with the Transportation Improvement Program, Tewksbury wasn't on near the radar screen.
Which is unfortunate.
Yes, absolutely. And I asked Beverly Woods why. And she said that the assessment work for Route 38 needs to come through the Department of Transportation. So there's a disconnect here somewhere from years of people saying that, go in this direction, go in that direction. That's, it's not the town's responsibility to understand to spend the money to come up with all of the design work and the assessment work. It's the Department of Transportation's responsibility to do that. And in the time I've been here, it just keeps to be, it's going to be a slippery slope. So I would be glad, and hopefully your office can spearhead some type of direction to go in, because it seems to be a nebulous conversation. Everybody seems excited about who to go see, what we're going to get together, but it never seems to materialize. So, and it's, obviously you can tell from the tone and the flavor from this board, we're desperate to get this done. This property looks like abandoned property in the middle of the town of Tewksbury, and it's an impediment to us to go forward with economic development, curb appeal. A lot of businesses of this area, they look like, when somebody shows up to open a business, why would you want to open a business beside a property that looks like what we have here? So it's, the way it is right now is designed to fail for many businesses, and they just are not interested. So my point I'm trying to make, my rambling point, is that we would love for your office to be the point office to contact the Department of Transportation and get whoever is, you believe should be involved in that conversation and that meeting, to move this forward rather than have another X amount of years go by where we're still talking about Route 38. It's a, it's a total frustration to me, and it's an embarrassment to me when people come up to me and ask me about this. I've been on this board for a number of years, and I keep saying that we're working on it. They look at me and the answer is, how can you be working on it when you're still talking about the same thing for seven, eight years that you've been on this board? So I would welcome anything you can do to move this process forward, Barbara. So I certainly would.
Sure. Happy to help. You know, I'm just beginning to get to know NIMCOG, but I certainly have that parallel experience with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And, you know, I think that we need to do that. I will say, you know, I think with all due respect, when you have the changeover in the Board of Selectment, given that there's not a contested race, I mean, it seems a foregone conclusion that you will have a new selectman that this is his career working in DOT.
You would be welcome.
And I think that that will be an incredible asset, to have inside knowledge of the workings of DOT. And I think that will really help as well. But you do need someone that's just a tireless advocate, that's going to go to everyone and make sure that when they see you, they think, oh yeah, Route 38, she's coming near me because she wants to talk about Route 38. And that's the way we'll do it.
Back to us.
Okay. Great.
Any other comments? Okay. So let me move to the next item, and this is a very broad bucket of local aid and general, Senator. But, you know, we know what the governor has proposed in his budget, and certainly that's of great benefit to Tewksbury and certainly is appreciated. And we count on you to help secure those funds as your branch in the House, you know, begin their budget preparation. But what also comes to our concern is we've had to be very creative looking into next year already relative to things like special education costs and out-of-district transportation that are driving some budget stress for us. So in that context of local aid, you know, the, that whole discussion of those resources is important to us, and we want to certainly raise that with you tonight.
So I have a lot of experience with special education funding, having a child with autism, and having been on my own school committee and having been involved in trying to sort of lift all boats in terms of special ed funding over the eight years that I was a state representative. You know, there are a couple of things that I would say just off the bat. The circuit breaker, as constructed by the new governor, looks to be at about a 67% reimbursement rate for next year, and of course, that's applied for retroactively, down a bit from the 72 to 75% that was happening last year. And that's just because the number is level funded. And obviously, there are potentially larger numbers of folks and, you know, so larger demand, so that, in essence, drops. So that's something that I always took on. I used to chair the Special Education Caucus. And one of the ideas was, although we may not all agree on a number of things around special ed, everyone agrees to the need for funding. And so, you know, we'll be looking at trying to, you know, asking in the budget, and in fact, my budget meeting is tomorrow with the Senate Ways and Means Chair. So this is a really timely meeting.
Time is good.
Yes, in fact, I have a couple of questions for you that I need to plug in for tomorrow. But looking at the circuit breaker, trying to figure out a couple of different things. Can we put additional monies in so we raise that percentage reimbursement? Can we look to drop the threshold by which people qualify for the circuit breaker? Right now, it's a four times per pupil average. And so then after you hit that threshold, you can get the 67% reimbursement a year out. So looking to see whether or not we could do something that recognizes costs of keeping kids in district, trying to set thresholds at 3.5% or 3.75% and what that would cost. So we will be costing that out with DEFC, trying to figure it out and promoting that. I also think that we do need to push to try to include transportation within the circuit breaker. When I was around last time, we did a good job of getting new software, and I hope that Tewksbury does this, to make sure that there are shared routes for out-of-district placements so that if you, so for example, my son, who went out of district, had a kid from Georgetown and a kid from Newburyport on his bus as an Andover student, because they were all ultimately heading to the same school. And so there were ways of saving by utilizing that software. I hope Tewksbury's using it. I don't know that they are, but that would be worth looking into. But certainly trying to roll some, if not all, of the transportation costs into the circuit breaker would be another, another thing to try to attack. There's been movement as recently as today on per pupil expenditure. The governor's budget is, bases it on a minimum of $20 per person. That's been higher in the past. It's been 25, it's been as high as 50. So if we were to add, raise that to $25 for Tewksbury, it would be a difference of about an additional $18,000 if we were able to raise it to a 50 per pupil, which I think may be an overreach. I don't know that we can do it. But would be a pretty significant, you know, $100,000 additional.
Sure.
But what I also have to look at is what the cost is statewide to be able to do this. So, I mean, I think the additional $5 per student is a, is a $2.8 million ask statewide. That's pretty reasonable. So going to try and figure that out and see what sort of support we can get among my colleagues to see, you know, if we can't push up a little bit the per pupil minimum threshold for communities like Tewksbury.
Well, we appreciate that. And certainly, just to kind of underscore the importance behind it, is we are going to ask our town meeting attendees to authorize $725,000 from the town's stabilization fund in order to address, you know, school budget shortfalls, primarily, you know, derived out of, you know, the escalating costs of special education and out-of-district placement. So it's a huge issue for us as a community, and it's not something that we really can repeat 12 months from now. We have some ability to do that as a one-time, you know, band-aid, and we're very fortunate that we have that capacity. But we're asking the town to support taking those funds that were set aside for, you know, other purposes, potentially in emergent situations, to really, you know, address that. So important to do.
So did the, did the out-of-district spending rise to enough of a threshold to apply for the pothole money that, that you can apply for if you've reached, have we looked into that, whether or not it reached, and I don't know off the top of my head what that threshold is right now. But there is money available if you reach a certain, if your out-of-district reaches a certain level. And it's not a year-in, year-out, you know, it's not an ongoing thing. It's an occasional, we've hit this unexpected, you know, cost.
That's essentially the situation that has been described to this board by our school colleagues. So we'll have to follow up on that.
I mean, that pothole account did take a 1.5% cut in November with the 9C cuts because everything across the board took a 1.5. But there is money there, and I think it's worth looking into, seeing whether or not you meet that threshold.
So there may be some education that you can provide to us. We'll reach out to our school colleagues and chat with them.
And the other question I just have out of curiosity is structurally, do you have an account that allows for you to, let's say that you receive circuit breaker reimbursements, and they exceed the cost of the special ed in a given year? Do you allow them to carry that over, or do you just go year to year in to town meeting with request?
Circuit breaker carries over, you have a budget, so it doesn't.
Okay. Excellent. All right.
So important issues, and certainly putting some stress on the town, so, but, you know, chapter 90 is different.
Can I just say though for the record, because I know there was a lot of upheaval maybe at the school committee level over this issue. I mean, this is a cost, but it's a cost just like you have costs for your teachers, your benefits, everything else. I think the families of special education children feel unduly targeted and brought forward as the reason why the budget is, you know, changed. But I just want to say in fairness that every child deserves an education.
Oh, there's no dispute. That's why we're going and putting the money out.
And if they need that, that special whatever, I think it's important that they receive that. And, you know, I don't have a good enough sense of your special education right now to get a sense of how many people go out, for what kinds of programs. But some of the things that I'm trying to do policy-wise in the State House, and I will be on the Education Committee, have to do with looking at some of the larger subgroups that go out of district and why. So autism is a big subgroup. A lot of times, they go out because the system doesn't, can't provide applied behavior analysis. So trying to provide that training is something we've been looking at, trying to provide a funding mechanism so when Mass Health approves reimbursement for Mass Health kids, you will actually begin to get monies back into your system for that. And we're also looking at dyslexia now, because I feel like a lot of kids go out of district because of dyslexia. So we're looking at sort of trying to attack the problem big picture-wise to make sure all school systems have the training that they need so that if they can provide these things, you don't have to go out of district. But I think hand in glove with that is some recognition that we need to incent keeping folks in district for a high quality program.
We agree on that point.
Yeah.
And certainly, I just want to emphasize that there's really no intent to be scapegoating in any circumstance.
No, I understand. I'm just having read the newspapers.
It's a reality of a budget process. So, Mr. Wilson, do you have a comment?
Well, that's all I was going to say, was I think it's, you know, in our discussions with the school, we wanted to help come up with a solution to fix the problem, and the rising cost was the out-of-district. I mean, it is what it is. But the reality is, we agree 100% that every child deserves an education. We certainly weren't ever trying to single out special education children. And I know that there was a lot of angst around that topic, but I think, I think you're right that, you know, finding a long-term solution that satisfies this is really the goal.
Mr. Pennler?
Yeah, just to add on that, I think long-term, as you talked about the threshold that, before districts get reimbursed, and I, and I actually, there was a meeting with the school committee, I know you were aware of, that's the Congressman, Congressman Walton was here as well, and this was discussed as well. The threshold as it's currently set up sets up an incentive for schools to really look to not give those sorts of services because of the cost. And as, if that threshold can come down in the long term, that I think evens that out across districts. And so there's not that incentive to argue with a parent that needs those, those special education services, which we should be providing. And, and so that, to me, is a longer-term solution. It certainly doesn't, isn't going to happen in the next two months, but if we can work towards longer-term solutions that look at those incentives, I think are important.
And we also need to pay attention to the progress that's being made statewide. They're looking at the funding formula, and specifically, one of the concrete requests is to have a more accurate depiction of how many special education students are in a given community. So right now, there's sort of an assumption that's built in that in no way, you know, is equal to what the census really looks like. So if, if nothing else, if we can change that piece of the formula, that would float all boats in all communities. And that's why I would fight on circuit breaker funding, because I felt like those communities that didn't do well in the Chapter 70 funding formula at least could get that money to help bring some of that back.
Well, if you can keep us apprised of how things are developing, and if there's any info that you need from us, or we can help assist in a lobbying effort at all to justify what we're asking, much appreciated.
And the governor did put in to freeze the rates, that there wouldn't be increases in the out-of-district schools. We'll watch that, because that will be, that will be a fight. There are people that believe that should be the case, and there are people that don't. So that will be an ongoing thing, and the House and Senate budgets.
All right, so I want to shift gears a little bit, bring this more from, you know, a local perspective as opposed to Beacon Hill perspective.
Sure.
We have two areas where you can be of immediate assistance to us. I know in one specific instance, you already have been, but relative to the Livingston Street Recreation Area and also the Tewksbury Cemetery.
Yes.
We have concerns and need for assistance. The delegation in the past, recent last session helped us get some legislation passed that would actually transfer a title to Livingston, to various parcels on Livingston Street to the town. They've been in dispute or in limbo, if you will, for many, many years, where hopefully we can get this across the finish line. And really, what is holding this up now is literally just some administrative attention on the part of D Camp. And we need things like their proposed requirements for maintenance of the state hospital cemetery that is going to a butt property that the town will be the beneficiary of. And they want fencing, or no fencing, or fencing that's six feet or four feet, and we literally can't get an answer from them. So very straightforward, there's no legislative assistance needed in the context of passage of bills. We have the bill passed, we need to get the people in the room, we've had a meeting with them.
Right.
We thought it was going to get us to the finish line, and quite frankly, that was before Christmas, and we haven't heard boo since then.
So I've got some homework to help D Camp tomorrow.
I'm sure there's changes in personnel and things of that nature, but we need to move that.
That is true. The handoffs from one vendor to the other, some have not been.
So you can have an immediate impact, and your fellow legislators who represent Tewksbury can have an immediate impact on this area if we can move the ball a little further up the field here.
Happy to do it.
The second part of that, Part B, is the Tewksbury Cemetery, and I know you've assisted us.
And I just circulated the docket for that.
Filing some legislation.
Spent a docket 1496.
Excellent. So we're very grateful for that.
So that one has to go through, that one has to go, be approved by your town meeting first. And we already have the language, as I said, it's Senate docket 1496. Once it's been approved by your town meeting and you send that to us, then we can put it through the Rules Committee, get it assigned to municipalities, and obviously, I'm chairing that so I can try to expedite that party. But that is the language. What we did was we went back and looked at what the dollar value was back when this was first being considered over a decade ago.
Right.
And a dollar amount was $60,000. So that's, that's what we have up there, is the fair consideration. Okay?
And we appreciate that. And I just want, as a sidebar, to ask the town manager, we need to put a warrant out of the, we have it. Okay, good. So, so thank you for doing that, and we'll be sure to advocate and ask our town meeting attendees to support this, and hopefully, we'll get your help to shepherd that through the process. Continuing, this act -- Continuing, this actually is a little bit more of a macro state-level problem or concern, but as it relates to Tuxbury, oh, excuse me, I skipped over one. What I, what I should go back to and talk about is Tuxbury State Hospital. And while we have a very, thank you, solid relationship with the hospital, they're invaluable.